Good evening. The meeting of the Newark City Council will come to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those participating via Zoom, when we get to the item that you want to speak on, please use the I raise your hand feature and the city clerk will turn on your microphone to speak at the appropriate time. Let the record show that all council members are present this evening. The first item is a commendation of the Newark Maintenance Division for their outstanding storm response efforts. This first presentation will be rescheduled for the next council meeting. We finally have a day without rain and wind and we're postponing it, so let's hope that the good weather continues. The next item is a proclaiming March as American Red Cross Month. Will Margot Simpson please join me down below? Ladies and gentlemen, this is the American Red Cross. We're presenting a proclamation to them this evening. They were founded in May of 1881 by Clara Barton, and this year is their 142nd anniversary. Whereas the American Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need, provide compassionate assistance affected by personal, local, or national disasters, and whereas people have counted on the Red Cross for information and skills, they need to be safe at home, at work, at school, and at play, training people in life-saving skills in CPR, first aid, fire prevention, and water safety. Whereas with over 1,500 volunteers in Alameda County, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to 239 disaster operations in 2022, received nearly 31,000 blood donations in 1,258 blood drives from citizens throughout Alameda County, and trained 2,975 people in aquatics and water safety. Whereas the American Red Cross installed 690 smoke alarms, trained 90, 659 citizens in first aid, CPR, and AED, and through the Pillowcase Project and Home Fires Campaign, 1,391 local individuals and families received fire prevention training and supplies, and responded to 583 members of the armed forces. Whereas for over 100 years, the United States Presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross in its humanitarian mission. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, and because it's not a government agency, the Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. Now therefore, I, Michael Hannan, Mayor of the City of Newark, on behalf of my Newark City Council colleagues, hereby proclaim March 2023 as the American Red Cross Month 2023. And before I present this proclamation and give you an opportunity to speak, I want to speak personally about my experiences with the American Red Cross. As you know, some of you may know, I did work in San Jose for many, many years. And we actually sent some staff members to respond to Katrina back in the day, and that was funded by the American Red Cross. So no matter where the tragedy or the disaster occurs, the American Red Cross is there to assist us in these situations. And I can't say without enough words the benefits that they bring to our community day in and day out. My last comment, for those of you that have not had the opportunity to donate blood, we are always in critical need of blood donations. So please, it takes an hour, they give you some great refreshments, I know them, know them well, take the time, because you're going to be in a situation someday where either you need some blood or a family member needs blood, and rather than wait for a crisis to occur, let's take an hour out of our day, schedule an appointment, and give blood at your local Red Cross. So with that, I'm proud to present this proclamation to the American Red Cross and certainly would like to give you an opportunity to say a few words, okay?
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the City Council for this proclamation. My name is Margot Simpson, and I am the Disaster Action Team Coordinator for Alameda County. Disaster action teams are volunteers that respond to anything from a tent fire to a large apartment complex fire throughout the county. As you say, we responded to almost 240 disasters over the course of this past year. We are, 90% of our people are volunteers, and we respond to disasters all over the country. And I would like to thank you for this proclamation and how much we appreciate your support.
Thank you, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.[386.12][386.12](applause)
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding the 2-1-1 system. Alice DeYoung, Executive Director of Eden INR Incorporated, will give the presentations. DeYoung?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, and Council, and City staff. Thank you for having me. This is my first in-person presentation, I just realized, since before the pandemic, so it's, I'm glad to be off of Zoom and in person, so thank you for having me. Thank you, City Manager Benun, for inviting me. My name is Allison DeYoung, I'm the Executive Director of Eden Information and Referral, which, as Mayor Hannan said, operates the 2-1-1 system for Alameda County. 2-1-1, for those who are not familiar, is the three-digit free dial-in code available 24/7 in multiple languages that connects people in need to the health, housing, human service referrals, resources, and information that they need. We are unique in Alameda County. All of the Bay Area counties have 2-1-1s, 2-1-1s are all over the state, all over the country. 2-1-1 in Alameda County, in addition to a services database, we maintain a housing database that contains all of the affordable housing units in Alameda County, as well as we have thousands of unrestricted units as well, mom-and-pop rental units. One of, for me, I always like to point out, one of the kind of beautiful things about 2-1-1 is, by the time people call 2-1-1, they have a need, or often multiple needs. In Alameda County, not surprisingly, half of our calls every year are related to housing and shelter. But through the course of conducting a call or intake, our trained staff will also do proactive outreach to try to make callers aware of programs that they may be eligible for, that they did not know they were eligible or didn't know about. So the example I give is, because we know there are not nearly enough housing and shelter resources that exist, somebody might call, and though 2-1-1 might not have the most appropriate housing resource to connect, through some questions, we might discover, oh, you're actually, it sounds like you may be eligible for CalFresh or Medi-Cal. The goal is to try to, you know, increase income that the callers can then put toward their housing. Right now, it's tax season, we're trying to make people, low-income callers, aware of the earned income tax credit, as well as where they can file their, get free tax assistance, preparation assistance. In addition to our live call staff, we have two websites. 211alameda county.org has all of our, it's a searchable database of all of our service, health, housing, and human services. We also have a transportation portal for folks looking for transportation, particularly paratransit. And then most recently, Alameda County Probation Department partnered with us to create a portal for folks formerly incarcerated and those on probation. And we have a housing database as well, achousingchoices.org, that people can search. Again, this does not contain all of the unrestricted housing in our database, but it does have all of the affordable housing, including which are, which have open waitlists and which are actually accepting housing applications. With the theme for tonight, with my esteemed colleague from the American Red Cross, I wanted to make people aware, even sometimes people who have heard of 2-1-1 from the service resource side of the house, are not aware of the role that we play in disasters. 2-1-1 Alameda County has a designated seat at the County Emergency, at the Office of Emergency Services in Dublin. When the OES activates the Emergency Operations Center, 2-1-1 has a designated seat in the Public Information Officer Room. We are, we would, when possible, have a staff person there that's constantly sending back the updated information as it's vetted at the county level. 2-1-1, in a large-scale disaster, is given out as the number to call by the media for people to get updated information, like emergency shelter, is my water safe to drink, what hospitals are open, how to locate a missing loved one, et cetera. The goal is to divert non-life-threatening calls away from 911. We also have a, we work very collaboratively with the other 2-1-1s in the Bay Area, and really across the country, and I always point this out when I'm presenting, because over the last few years, we have taken overflow calls for other 2-1-1s in disaster. We took after Hurricane Florence, Hurricane Harvey, for North Carolina and Texas respectively, and then more locally, we took for three weeks after the campfire and the big fire in Butte County, that was the camp, and the car fire in Shasta County. So I point that out because for us, it's nice to help our sister 2-1-1s, it's good disaster training for our own staff, but we all know, living in this county, that it's, it is quite likely a matter of time before there's a huge earthquake that affects this area, and in that case, we have a national partnership of 2-1-1s that will help handle our overflow calls. We also were very active in the early days of COVID. Our call volume doubled in those first couple of months. And the two last things I'll say about disaster, we also have a statewide partnership now with PG&E, all of the 2-1-1s in the state. We have a care coordinator on staff who is helping the access and functional needs community get better prepared for public safety power shut-offs, and when PG&E designates that, there's sort of an activation, as happened Tuesday of this week, 2-1-1s now can, for, when, in particular situations, we are able to provide DoorDash deliveries, a hotel accommodation, and a free Lyft ride. It gets, we get reimbursed by PG&E. So that's a new thing that we're just rolling out. And we also do free disaster preparedness trainings, including yesterday in the City of Newark, our disaster preparedness coordinator gave to Newark City staff and community members. Quickly, just some stats about 2-1-1. Last fiscal year, you can see, we, we call it contacts because we have both live phone as well as two-way texting. We handled just over 81,500 from, throughout the county, just over 1,000 originated from the City of Newark. Just over 100,000 total referrals were provided to those folks, 1,300, a little over 1,300 to those calling or texting from Newark. And again, I won't read all these to you, but you'll see a top needs of Newark callers for that fiscal year, housing always at the top, utility assistance, legal, et cetera. And the demographics also of Newark callers, you can see, over half are living with some form of disability, 15% seniors, majority of women call every year, about a quarter single mothers with minor children. And this, this income, a lot of these sort of mirror our county-wide stats, 99% of our callers, year over year, are either low, very low, or extremely low income. These demographics, they haven't changed, I was sort of looking, they haven't changed a lot, although in keeping with sort of the percent of seniors calling is on the rise. And I will just end by saying, we have a couple of new, new things, I just wanted to make you aware. One, again, in, as part of a statewide partnership, we are doing some proactive outreach, we're asking folks if they, through the intake, if they smoke or vape, and if they say yes, we ask if they would like to be, if they'd like to be interested in connecting to information to help them quit. And then soon, sometime, I think in April, we will be launching in partnership with the other 2-1-1s, it's called California vs. Hate, and 2-1-1 will be given out. There will be, for people who have been a victim of a hate crime, we will be collecting that data and connecting them to commensurate resources to assist. And that's that. I, this, I wanted to just, if you haven't watched, if you haven't clicked on the link that was in your packet, I do encourage you, I won't show it tonight, it's just under six minutes long, but this is a client who are partner 2-1-1 in Los Angeles, and it's, it's an extremely moving, this is a veteran who fell on some hard times, and it just shows the, quite literally, the life-changing impact that 2-1-1 can have on, on folks. So if you get, it's just under six minutes, if you have six minutes, I encourage you to watch it. And that's my presentation, so if unless anyone has any questions.
City Clerk, do we have the opportunity to see this video? We have time to spare, five minutes to see something. Is that something we can show? Let me turn to my colleagues for questions. First of all, see if there's anyone from the public that has any questions or comments on this presentation. I'll turn to my colleagues to see if you have questions or comments. Councilmember Bucci?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, in the time I've been here, we've, I've never had a 2-11, or 2-1-1, 2-1-1 or 2-11? Do you have a preference?
2-11 sounds kind of cool to me.[1056.08][1056.08](laughter)
I had no idea that you guys provided so many services, so that's, that's really cool to know. How do you guys kind of get the word out? I see 2-1-1 on the side of buses, I've seen Lombard, I've seen some things, but I've never once seen just a list of so many things that you guys provide, which is great.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. I just was at a volunteer recruitment event at Wells Fargo in Fremont the other day, and I always sort of say, you know, it's, 2-1-1's kind of the best program that you've never heard of. It's sort of my goal, you know, I'm always like, how can we make 2-1-1 sort of ubiquitous and as well-known as 911? So we, 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 like you said, we, when we, when possible, we will advertise on BART, we partner often with law enforcement and first responders, we have little business cards. I will go out and sort of make presentations, particularly sometimes the cards can be helpful when working with the unhoused population, sort of make them aware. The number one, we ask our callers, actually, the number one way that callers hear about it is through word of mouth, so people, I think users are recommend, you know, connecting their friends and family to. The other thing is, because it's a national dialing number, sometimes we sort of can, we take advantage of national, like the United Way Worldwide will sometimes do a 2-1-1 press, you know, PSA or an ad campaign, and it doesn't matter where, as long as you dial 2-1-1 from your own community, you'll get routed to your local 2-1-1, so.
My mic turned off, there you go. I guess my last comment would just be that it's really cool also that we partner with different counties, 2-1-1s and things, because I think you're right, it's only a matter of times we have an earthquake here, and, you know, I had some family that was in the campfire, so it was, you know, any of the resources up there were great, so just, yeah, keep up the great work, that's amazing.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you.
We'll be able to get apologies, not set up for the internet. That's okay. Yep. I'll encourage my colleagues to take a look at it at their leisure. And for those in the audience, you see the website connection here. I have had an opportunity to look at 2-1-1 in the past, and I think you characterized it correctly, there are so many resources there, and I, as I hear you talk about the high percentage of our low and low-income folks that make calls, unfortunately, it's probably a situation where it becomes desperation, and they're looking for whatever resource they can to address and resolve the situation that they find themselves, but there are so many resources that are available through the 2-1-1, and I really appreciate the fact that you can tap what language you speak, and it immediately translates all the various pages, if I'm not mistaken, into what language they're most comfortable with. And just out of curiosity, how many languages do you have on the portal? Do you have a hand, roughly?
Oh, on the phone line, yeah. On staff, we have staff members who speak, I think currently, four languages on, spoken by staff, that we have on staff, but in the event that somebody calls that speaks a language, other than that, we use Language Line, the three, the real-time three-way translation, and I think Language Line has 150 language capability.
But even as people access your website, if they type in their language, you're going to be able to assist them, which is great.
Yeah, we, that's Google Translate on the website, and that has a ton of, as you've seen, a ton of languages, yeah.
Well, I'll ask our City Manager at some point, I know this is such an important resource, maybe at one of our quarterly newsletters we can highlight, and I think we've probably have done it in the past, we can highlight the 2-1-1 system, just to get the word out to residents, is available, because I think the more people that know about it, the more issues that we can be responsive to. That's our responsibility as a government.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, and I think the last thing I'll say is, sort of part of the agency's kind of longer-term vision is to, you know, there are 2-1-1s across the country, sort of, the goal is to really get further upstream. Again, by the time people are calling 2-1-1, they're, you know, so the more that we can sort of do kind of greater care coordination and partner with other CBOs and government, the goal is to, you know, again, keep people in their homes before they end up unhoused, get them, you know, get a greater harness on social determinants of health, et cetera, so, yeah, that's the longer-term goal.
Well, please make sure you share with your staff our appreciation for what they do, day in and day out, to help folks that are in a vulnerable situation, to navigate all the resources that are out there available to them, and thank you for your presentation this evening.
I certainly will, and thank you for the city's continued funding, I very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next item is public comment on any item not listed on the agenda. For Zoom members, please use the raise your hand feature if you would like to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda this evening? Ms. Harrington, anybody online that would like to speak to any item not on the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. So we'll close, close public comment. The next item is consent calendar, and it consists of items D1 through D9. Are there any items staff would like pulled from the consent calendar?
Not this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any items the public would like pulled from the consent calendar for discussion? Are there any items my colleagues would like pulled from the consent calendar? Okay. Ms. Harrington, is there anybody online? Thank you. So the consent calendar consists of the following, if you want to take a break, feel free, I'll be a few minutes. Item one is approval of the audit of demands. Two, approval of the March 9, 2023 minutes. Three, adopt a resolution to amend the position allocations in the 2022-2024 biennial budget and capital improvement plan to delete one cashier and add one accounting assistant, one, two. Four, approval of the plans and specifications, adopt a resolution accepting the bid and award of a contract for the total bid to American Asphalt Repair and Resurfacing Company for 2122, citywide parks, pathways, resurfacing for ADA access, Project 1297, and amending the 2022-2024 biennial budget and capital improvement plan. This should be exempt from CEQA review per CEQA Guideline Section 15301, existing facilities. Item five is to adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to issue a purchase order and execute related documents with Environmental Systems Research Institute, ESRI Inc., for software and support in an amount not to exceed 89,400, and authorizing a budget amendment for the 2022-2024 biennial budget and capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2023. Six, resolution approving the reappointment of senior advisory committee members, and I'll take a moment here to thank those members of our community that continue to volunteer to serve on committees. We are a successful city providing services to our resident, not just because of what we do here, but also because of our many volunteers that serve our community, we thank them for their service. Seven, adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant through the State of California Office of State and Community Corrections, and amend the 2022-2024 biennial budget and capital improvement plan to appropriate $34,402.05 to the California Board of State and Community Corrections Fund. Eight, adopt a resolution approving a 10-year extension of the current Alameda County Vehicle Abatement Program Agreement. Nine, mid-year budget review and adopt a resolution amending the 2022, it says 2022-2022, is that, is that the correct verbiage?
Thank you, Your Honor, for catching that. I would imagine that is the 2022 through 2024 biennial budget.
Thank you. And capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2023. Would someone like to move the items to be approved as recommended by staff, with any items approved by resolution, or it's being numbered consecutively in that the reading of the title suffices for purposes of introduction of adoption of the ordinance? Moved by Councilmember Bucci?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Freitas. Let's go ahead and take a vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're a public hea, the first item on the public hearings is to adopt a resolution to authorize the allocation of $12 million from the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund to Satellite Affordable Housing Associate Manager to execute the Affordable Housing Loan Agreement and all related loan documents to effectuate the approval of the funding award for an affordable housing project at 6347, 6375 Thornton Avenue. This is exempt from CEQA review per CEQA Guideline Section 15061B3. This is a public hearing. Mr. Benun, staff report?
Yes, given Your Honor, members of the council, item E1 is a recommendation from city staff to allocate $12 million towards an affordable housing project. If the council may recall, last year, the city issued a notice of funding opportunity to invite partners to collaborate with us to develop affordable housing in the city. We did receive a response from Satellite Affordable Housing Associates, otherwise known as SAHA. This is truly an exciting project, as this would be the first time we would construct multi-family units. This would include 15 two-bedroom apartments and 16 three-bedroom apartments, and again, the city's contribution here would be $12 million. Assuming the council approves the recommended action this evening, the developer would come back later this fall presumably for, after going through the full entitlement process, including plan review and, and of course, community engagement, and that would be the plan. Tonight, we have presentations, joint presentation, we'll start off with city staff, we'll begin with our senior planner, Ms. Carmelisa Lopez, and then following her, we have the project applicant, and I do note that we do have two of the city's affordable housing consultants available this evening, one who's in person and one who's appearing remotely, and then we also have special counsel, as the council will learn in the staff report, in an oral presentation, is a fair amount of legal documents associated with this, so to the extent that the council has any legal questions, we have special counsel available. So we'll begin tonight with our senior planner, Ms. Carmelisa Lopez, she will start off the staff report. Ms. Lopez?
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council, for your time this evening, and thank you for the introductions, City Manager. This is the roadmap for the presentation today. We'll start briefly with introductions of the city, of the team that has been working on this effort, provide an overview of the notice of funding availability. Our Satellite Affordable Housing Associates, Jonathan Asman, will be presenting on the project proposal, and then Christine Wang with Community Planning Collaborative, who's our housing consultant, will be going over the project against the NOFA priorities and discuss the loan terms in a little bit more detail. As for the team that's been working on these efforts, we have Community Development Director Stephen Turner, who's here tonight, as well as Deputy Director, Deputy Community Development Director Art Interiano, and myself. For Community Planning Collaborative, there's Kristi Wang and Paul Penager, who's available via Zoom tonight. As for our legal team, we have John Getz with Myers-Nave, who's been very helpful with preparing the loan documents and advising us throughout this process. And lastly, Jonathan Asman with Satellite Affordable Housing Associates, which we'll be referring to as SAHA throughout the presentation, he'll be presenting on the proposed project As city manager of a new briefly mentioned, there was Affordable Housing Work Plan that was adopted by the city council in May of 2021. It identifies the priorities, housing needs, types, and programs to help address the needs of Newark residents. We've made significant progress since then, one being the housing element update. We recently had a meeting with the community last night, just to go over the, the update as well as gain some feedback. We've developed a local preference study, and the item before you tonight is a result of a notice of funding availability that was released last year. So for the NOFA, it was released in June 2022. It does go over the priority housing needs, so we targeted housings for families, key workers, people and families at risk of homelessness, and people with disabilities and other special housing needs. And as part of the NOFA, $12 million was made available from the city's Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund. In January 2023 of this year, we, staff took the, took the proposal and funding allocation recommendation to the Community Development Advisory Committee, and we went over the priorities with them that was outlined in the NOFA. And overall, they shared their support, and overall unanimously recommended city council approval of the funding allocation. As for the NOFA process to date, as I mentioned, it was released in June 2022. We received one submission as of August 2022, and the meeting with the CDAC was held in January 2023. And the, and for tonight, we are in step five, which is a city council meeting for the funding decision. At the end of the presentation, we'll discuss what the next steps are. And now I'll hand over the presentation to Jonathan Asman with SAHA, who will go over the, the project.
So I'm Jonathan Asman with SAHA. Really excited about this project. Just, I'll just speak briefly about the project and happy to answer any questions you might have afterwards. SAHA was formed in 2013 when two smaller non-affordable, affordable housing nonprofits merged, Satellite Housing and Affordable Housing Associates. Satellite Housing is the older of the two. It was founded in 1966, when two smaller nonprofits merge, and then you add on 10 years of steady growth. We're a substantial organization now with 75 communities in our portfolio. There's 3,600 units in those 75 properties. I'm on SAHA's real estate development team. There's about 10 of us, and we have a pipeline of about 17 projects, depending on how you define a project. When completed, those will represent another approximately 1,200 homes and nearly a half billion dollars in assets. SAHA has experienced in the city of Newark, Newark Gardens 1 and 2 are on Cedar Boulevard in Western Newark. Together, they represent 200 affordable senior homes. The proposed development will be a single apartment building with 57 homes, about half of which will be larger two- and three-bedroom apartments and about half-one-bedroom apartments. All homes will be affordable to households whose income is 30% to 60% of the median. That translates to rents of $727 a month up to about $2,100. The building will have a range of amenities, which I'll point out on the next slides. Next slide, please. We propose about seven funding sources, the most important of which is the city funding that you're considering tonight, because not only is it a substantial amount of money, but that, it's, it's the first money in the deal, so it requires that leap of faith in our vision for this site. We propose to use, the biggest source is better, is low-income housing tax credits. Those are mostly federal credits, some state credits as well. We're planning to access two sources from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, their multifamily housing program, as well as their Veterans Housing and Homelessness Prevention Program, which Mayor Hanen expressed an interest in serving veterans back in January. We can access a smidge of affordable housing program funds, which is a program through the, a forgivable loan program through the Federal Home Loan Bank of San Francisco, about $15,000 a unit, and the project can support a conventional fully amortizing loan of about $2 million. The building will be rated platinum, which is the highest rating in the U.S. Green Building Council's LEED green building rating system. So it'll have a range of green building features. I'll just point out a couple, the photovoltaic panels on the bottom left, and at the top right, a battery electricity storage. In the middle picture on the left, you can see the building will have spacious courtyard. And I should mention, these pictures are illustrative, the design is conceptual at this point. I think one of SAHA's greatest assets is our resident services team. They provide really rich services and great services to support our residents. One of their more popular programs is their community gardening program, which is at most of our sites, where they provide wheelchair-accessible raised gardening beds in a sunny spot. In this case, we have a west-facing courtyard. You can see a picture of one of our Oakland properties there on the bottom right, and they provide the tools and supplies and support that residents need to keep their garden plots thriving. This is the first floor. It's mostly a parking garage, as you can see, but some of the resident amenities are located there, acoustically insulated music practice room, which is not just for kids, it's for all residents, a computer lab, bicycle storage, and we're planning to provide a bicycle repair station as well. This is the second floor. The main community space in the building is the multipurpose community room. It's big enough to accommodate all residents for monthly town hall meetings, movie nights. Our resident services team provide Thanksgiving dinners at all our properties. Residents can reserve the space for parties, events of that nature. You can see it opens out onto the courtyard for indoor-outdoor flow. I mentioned the garden, in the, in the courtyard, I mentioned the gardening beds. In addition, there will be a children's play structure, as well as informal seating areas and ornamental landscaping. With your approval tonight, we'll proceed to purchase the site next month in April, and then, next slide, please. And then we will launch into community engagement, engaging with neighbors, design, entitlements, and funding applications. We anticipate being able to start construction in early 2026, and by the end of 2027, we anticipate that this concept will be home to 57 families. Happy to answer any questions you have. Thanks for your support. And I'll pass it to Kristi.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Mayor Hanen and council members and staff. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Kristi Wong. I'm a principal with Community Planning Collaborative, formerly known as, or also known as Berdindriscal Community Planning. We are your affordable housing consultants, and we've had the pleasure of working with your team on both the Affordable Housing Work Plan, as well as the housing element, which Paul has been leading. So we helped your team develop the funding NOFA for this, for this, for this funding opportunity, and have helped to review SAHA's submission. We used the framework developed in the Affordable Housing Work Plan to help provide a way to screen what our requirements might be and priorities for the NOFA. And I'll walk through these five main categories with you to share our analysis of the Thornton Avenue project. Next slide. So first, consistency with Newark's housing element. Does this proposal help achieve the vision for providing safe, decent, affordable shelter for Newark residents? And we believe it does. This is a very high-quality proposal from, from a well-established affordable housing developer for an 100% affordable housing project. It is consistent with priorities in both the housing element, as well as your general plan, in terms of providing high-density residential housing here. Next slide. Next is consideration of design. This is extremely consistent with the city's vision for the community. The proposal includes design features that speak to the existing context, and it is, we, the, sorry, the architect that the developers partnering with has a very strong reputation for working with community and designing multifamily buildings that speak to the existing context, making room for new, for new residents. Next slide. The next parameter is providing public benefits in line with Newark's housing priorities. This can mean a lot of things. In the NOFA, we asked for two specific things. One was targeting lower-income households, and then the other was targeting families, in part by having a larger number of, of units with three or more bedrooms. So with the income targeting, 100% of the, of the units will serve lower-income households, between 30% and 60% of area median income, and it averages at 45% of area median income. For population targeting, we have, the proposal includes 15 two-bedrooms and 16 three-bedrooms out of the 57 total units, and I'll note that SAHA has expressed an openness to review and adjust the unit mix if that is a priority. Next slide. Oh, furthermore, the, the physical amenities and the services that will be provided are planned to meet the needs of families with children. And so strong team experience and approach, I spoke to this a little bit already, but the proposal does include evidence of the developers' experience developing and managing high-quality properties over time. This team has a, an exceptional reputation, I would say, for being community and resident-oriented. SAHA is highly respected as a developer and owner, and they've selected an architect, Van Meter Williams Pollock, that is really well-known for its focus on urban design and the way that buildings fit into the community, as well as their ability to work with residents of the community. They've already shown willingness to listen to community and adapt to input as appropriate, and they are prepared to launch into their community engagement process to directly inform the, the next steps of the design and amenities. Lastly, but not least, financial feasibility. Is this project feasible, and is it an effective use of the city's funding? This is extremely critical, and it's a really, it's also very difficult in this environment of rising construction costs, in a time when inflation is affecting the cost of everything and making it difficult for everyone to live here. This is obviously an important measure, and we in the NOFA designated a few metrics for this, cost effectiveness or value, number of units, and leveraging of other resources, which is, in other words, bang for your buck. So we, overall, this project is in line with industry standards, as they are today. It can, there's a little bit of, you may have a little bit of sticker shock, but this is where the, where costs are for building multifamily housing in the Bay Area. So in terms of cost-effectiveness, the current proposal shows a cost of $850,000 per unit. So this is expensive, but it is on par with the industry, especially with other projects that require the payment of prevailing wages. The project is also on the smaller side, which makes the cost per unit higher, but it is also a feasible, it is in the range of feasible in terms of the number of units for the project, because it's important to both consider the upfront development costs as well as the operations of a project, and 57 units is, is an efficient use of resources. And lastly, leveraging other financing sources, the project is requesting $210,000 a unit in city subsidy. This has a very, this is relies on a very reliable plan for obtaining funding. I think we'll note, this is also on the higher side of typical, but it is within the range of normal, and to SAHA's credit, they're continuing to evolve the financing plan to see whether there are additional opportunities out there. Next slide. So in summary, our, based on our analysis and in collaboration with your staff, the project meets the priorities that have been identified in the Affordable Housing Work Plan and in the NOFA. This is a great project team, and they've just demonstrated their willingness to listen and to shift gears as needed. So I'm here to answer any questions about that. But first, I'll, next slide, first, first I'll go over a little bit about the loan documents that formalized this agreement. The team is bringing, has four documents at this time, a loan agreement, the regulatory agreement, a deed of trust, and the promissory note. These four documents will memorialize and protect the city's investment in the property over time, and make sure that affordability is protected. I'll note that these agreements will probably be amended in the future when, when SAHA does the construction loan closing, but this is, this outlines what, what is in place for now, and also sort of the outline for the relationship going forward. Next slide. So I'll go over a few of the main terms. The loan amount is $12 million. Today, or in the next month, when SAHA closes on the, acquires the properties, it's about $4.3 million that they will draw down from the, request from the city. The rest will come in later at construction time. The loan term will be 57 years from the final certificate of occupancy, so that's when the building department says it's okay for people to live in the building, and the interest rate will be 3%. And so just to talk about repayment, this is the city's investment in affordability. The main point is not for the city to make interest income on the project, but, but it, as is typical, the city will get a pro-rata share of what's called residual receipts, or as the cash flow out of operations. So as the property, each year, they'll evaluate their costs and their income, and the city will get a share depending on how much money compared to the other funding sources are being put into the deal. So the affordability of the project, this is a critical element that, that staff has been considering, which is how to make sure that the affordability of the project is protected over the long run. And so there, it will, there will be several regulatory agreements, one associated with this loan, one associated with the state density bonus, which the project developer intends to apply for, and then regulatory agreements associated with the other funding sources that will be utilized. Next slide. As has been mentioned, these are the affordability levels that the project will serve 30, up to 30% of AMI for the extremely low income, up to 50% of area median income for very low income, and, and 22% of the project will serve up to 80% income households. And just, just for color, a household at 30% of area median income, a four-person household makes $43,000, and say at 80%, it's $114,000. And so I want to reiterate that, to the extent it's permitted by law and the other funding parameters, there will be a preference given to applicants who live or work in Newark. I know this is a priority for the council, and this is something that the SAHA has been, was in the funding NOFA, SAHA plans to, is eager to comply with this preference, and we will be working with you to make that a policy going forward. As I mentioned before, the top, the team's top priority is protecting the city's investment in affordability. So the two last terms on here, covenants running with the land and subordination, are two aspects that relate to how to make sure that the property will serve low-income residents far into the future. So no matter who owns the property, these covenants run with the land. If it is transferred to another affordable housing developer, if a, if a bank forecloses, the regulatory agreement remains in place. I will mention that it is often typical for a commercial lender to put, to require that their loan come first and be ahead of all regulatory agreements. For the moment, the city is taking the position that it's important for its regulatory agreement to be in top priority. We will, we may have to revisit that when construction loans are being signed, but it is also typical to figure out a, a compromise. So currently, the agreement has the city in, in first position, and if a bank were to foreclose on the property, there is the agreement that we would, that the city would talk with the successor owner and consider how to adjust affordability on a temporary and limited basis to make that possible. We cannot answer more questions, but I just, it has been a top priority for your team to protect the affordability. Next slide. I think that is the end of my portion, so I will also be here to answer any questions, if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristi and Jonathan, for your presentations. Before we conclude our presentation, I just wanted to go over the next steps again. So if the funding allocation were to be approved tonight, we would move forward with executing the loan documents, and I'm dispersing the funds to SAHA. That is the pre-development loan funding. And in late April, SAHA plans to complete the acquisition of the properties. And then the next step would be to start the community outreach efforts, and that will, they'll use that feedback to refine the proposal, and that will be what will be presented to the city in the form of a formal entitlement application. That's expected in the summer of 2023. As currently proposed, we do anticipate there might be some project changes, but currently, a design review, minor use permit for the proposed building height, and a density bonus request with incentives and concessions such as parking will likely be the entitlement request. I'm happy to answer questions about that after the presentation. Lastly, stat, in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council authorize the allocation of $12 million from the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund to SAHA, and authorize the city manager to execute the Affordable Housing Loan Agreement and all related documents to effectuate the approval of the funding award for an affordable housing project at 6347-6375 Thornton Avenue. That concludes our presentation. We're available if you have any questions. Thank you.
So colleagues, this is a public hearing, so before I open up the public hearing, are there any clarifying questions that you have for the staff, Councilmember Bucci?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. Obviously, I'm happy to see the Newark preference was added in there. Newark Gardens came up. That, that project has been in our community for many decades, and there have been many complaints over the years because there are hardly any Newark people there, which was one of the driving forces for the Newark preference. So I guess I have a couple of questions. One, I know that's sitting with the county right now, and that that can take some time. Do we have an update on when we're going to hear back about the status of that?
Thank you, Councilmember Bucci. Stephen Turner, Community Development Director. We are currently working with the county and our consultant team on the local preference study and process. We hope to make some progress this year so that we can bring to the council a local preference ordinance for your consideration. So that's important. That's, of course, is in the work plan and would be an ongoing effort as part of the housing element policy and programs going forward as well. So nothing really beyond that to report tonight. However, in lieu of having an official ordinance or policy, we have been able to get the word out in the community about affordable housing opportunities within Newark. A good example of that is the Cedar Community Apartments that council approved last year. Even though we didn't have and were able to offer a local preference for that project, we did an extensive marketing campaign to encourage folks who particularly live in Newark to consider applying for those, those units. We sent out a mailer card to every single address in Newark and encouraged them to review the, the website for Cedar Community Apartments and consider that. We did, from what I hear from Abode Services, who was managing that process, we did get a very large response, and I think currently out of the 64 units that are reserved for at-risk households, there's approximately 25% of those, or about 15 applications, that have a, have a Newark connection to that. So that's a pretty good response, and we're looking forward to having Newark-connected households and families living in that project. So even without a, an ordinance or a policy in place, there is still a lot that we can do to encourage our community to apply for, for these units. And that's been a successful program. Certainly, having an ordinance would kind of make it official, and we will continue to move forward in that direction this year.
Okay. You know, Abode has been a good partner on that, and they certainly carried a lot of water for that and did a lot of mailers and things before the cities. Jonathan, I wouldn't mind hearing from you what SAHA plans on doing to reach out to Newark residents and maybe what you've done in the past. If you guys have some sort of plan for reaching out to Newark folks to make sure we get a, as many locals in there as legally possible. Not to put you on the spot, but you did say if I had any questions, so.
Thanks for the question. I am probably not optimal, the optimal person to ask. We have a lease-up team, part of our property management team, but happy to do, we will reach out to community organizations in general as part of the lease-up process, advertise it widely, and the mailing idea would be open to that as well.
Okay. There's a number of public events that happen here throughout the year, and since we got a four-year timeline on this project, I would certainly suggest maybe attending some of them and setting up a table, but just getting the word out, right?
That sounds great. Thank you.
I would appreciate that. Let me ask you a question. Where do you guys get your referrals from? Do you work with the county? Do you work with other nonprofits? Is it just kind of an, an open application process? That's what I'm asking.
We do not, at this building, I do not anticipate being able to get any project-based Section 8. So assuming this funding mix stays the same, we would receive applicants, we'd advertise the, the housing opportunity widely, and we'd receive applicants for maybe a month or, or two, close that list, and then we do a random sort and start processing.
Like a lottery?
Lottery, and then process names in order. And then, of course, the local preference would move all, if that's approved, would move all people who live or work in the city to the top.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And then last class, I have a question for staff. If this gets approved tonight, what will be left in our affordable funding, our affordable housing fund?
Sure. So the current fund balance is $42.5 million. There is, there are funds set aside for both Home Key and Timber Streets, and those funds have yet to be transferred. Those amounts are $4.5 million for Home Key and 2.7 for Timber Streets. After subtracting out, that leaves a balance of approximately $35 million and some change. If this project were to proceed as presented, that would leave a balance of $23.3 million. As far as where we go from here with that remaining balance, the council is where staff is engaging the community on our housing element, and we come back to the council. As a part of that presentation, we would revisit the Affordable Housing Work Plan and make whatever recommendations and changes we need to do to dispose of these $23 million. And there's still some items in that plan that we'd certainly like to revisit. That includes a first-time home, homebuyer program, likely would result in another notice of funding opportunity so that we can collaborate with another affordable housing developer, so.
Okay. That was my next question, beat me to it, about the first-time homebuyer program, so. Okay. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Correiazo.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So I did have a question. With the financing that is going on, the banking, everything that's going on in the banks, is there any danger, do we run any danger in losing financing? What happens?
I don't think that this is, is something to pay attention to, but I don't think that there are any immediate risks. I know that there are some developers working with Silicon Valley Bank right now, trying to close construction loans, and they have been reassured that there are, there will, there will be a bank there, there will be someone there to, to make a loan to those projects. Fortunately, we are not at that stage, and so I think that, you know, we'll, the, we'll need to be extra diligent. SAHA would be extra diligent in terms of looking at their options when they go out to find lenders, so.
I know San Francisco has several projects that are on hold because they were, went through Silicon, and even here in Newark, some of the companies that buy food off of us, their checks are on hold because their money's at Silicon Valley and banks.
Yeah.
But my other question, the units out of 57, you said so many had two bedrooms, so many had three bedrooms. Does that mean the rest are one bedrooms?
I believe so. Are there any studios?
Nothing more than a three-bedroom.
I think there.
15, two, 16 threes, 26 ones.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
I'm extremely excited about this project. Mr. Turner, assuming that we have, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, yes.
Let me go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
I almost got it through tonight. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Ms. Harrington, is there anyone online that would like to speak to this item?
No, Your Honor.
I'll close the public hearing. That's why you do what you do. I'm really excited about this project. Mr. Turner, assuming we put these 57 units, and it could be more, into our Affordable Housing Bank in the last 12 months, how many affordable housing units have we either permitted, built, or having the queue to be built? What would you estimate that number to be?
Pretty close.
That would be approximately 380 units.
Outstanding. There's so many things I want to say about this project that excite me. First of all, platinum status. I mean, that's outstanding. Congratulations on that. And I know that there are a number of issues. This is really, to my mind, tonight, simply approving the funding. We really won't know what the project will look like until it comes back to us, because I know you're still negotiating or looking to work with other property owners to see if you can acquire additional properties that may allow you maybe to expand the project. That's my understanding. But all of that will come back to this council at some point in the future for our review and approval. I'm excited about the two- and three-bedrooms. It's a real critical need in our community to provide affordable housing to families. Most of the units that we built in the Bay Area are one-room, and we need to make sure that we accommodate units for families, so congratulations. Congratulations on that. It's greatly appreciated. With no other comments, I'm looking for a motion to adopt a resolution to approve this.
And Mayor, Hannah, may I just interject before that takes?
Yes, you may.
We just want to make sure that the council is aware of some more specific next steps that are coming up this year. So depending upon council's action tonight, if the funds are awarded, the applicant would go back and start to prepare their formal entitlement application for submission to the city for consideration sometime this summer. We expect that entitlement application to include all of the discretionary entitlements, including design review, perhaps a minor use permit to allow additional height. It could also include a density bonus request to allow densities that are higher on the site than what the general plan and zoning would typically allow. It may also include, will likely include some density bonus concessions that are allowed through state law in order to make affordable housing projects more feasible. Those concessions could include concessions to parking and other site development regulations. Those concessions, as I mentioned, often are really needed in order to have these affordable housing developments pencil out financially. So city council will see all of that after staff reviews the application sometime this summer and into the fall of this year.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, just real quick, is there some sort of milestone schedule where we can expect to see certain things by certain dates, and if certain things and commitments haven't been met, that, then that money would then come back to the city? I, I know, and this is different, but some of our pro, for-profit developers have sat on some of these properties for a number of years. We haven't seen any action on them. So I guess I'm just, you know, we're, we're in a hurry to get affordable houses built, so.
Yes, we, we all are and wish we could build affordable housing much more quicker than, than we can. The, there is a number of provisions within the loan documents that talk about case SAHA defaults, the, the city would get, get the land, get all of the professional work that comes with it so that we could work with an affordable housing developer to ultimately develop housing on, on that site. There's not any specific timeline milestones that I'm aware of, but perhaps Kristi can add a little bit of color to that.
Actually, there are.
Okay, great.
In the loan agreement, there is an appendix that has a scheduled performance and has several dates, which I don't have, have them off the top of my head, but getting to a construction loan closing, completing construction, having, completing the lease-up. And so there, if, if SAHA does not meet those dates and/or if they don't negotiate with you to extend those dates, then they would be in default, and the city would be able to foreclose on the land.
Okay, thank you. And before you leave, I want to take a moment to thank you for the work that you've done on our behalf. I did take a look at some of the attachments, and one of them specifically were questions to SAHA regarding a number of issues that would be of concern to us. For example, what would you anticipate the likelihood of needing more than the $12 million? And the response to you was, it's highly unlikely they're going to need anything beyond the $12 million based on our experience. So I read those questions. Those are questions that I think we all would have asked here, given the opportunity to do so, but you did it on our behalf, and I want to say thank you because you're looking out for the best interests of the city. So.
We're doing our best.
I don't know if that was city staff or the, or you, but whomever.
Team effort.
Thank you. That was appreciated. Any other comments from my colleagues? Great. Now, now can I go ahead and look? See, I'm just so excited about giving the money away. You know, I was picturing us walking out with this big check. This council is focused on affordable housing. It's a number one, it's one of the number one items that we want to deliver to our community. A number of us, as we've been on this council for a number of years, have seen the city collect monies that go into the affordable housing fees. And it got to a point where we thought, you know, we, we've collected so much money, but what we want to see is the deliverables. We want to see units built, because you can collect all this money, but if you're not delivering the product, you're not bringing a need that the community is looking for. So city staff, thank you for this. You know, this is a day for celebration in my mind, when we can bring affordable housing units to those that are desperately needing affordable housing units, especially in this economy today. So with that being said, I'll look for a council member to make a motion to accept the resolution as presented in front of us.
I would happily make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Bucci.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Jorgens. Let's go ahead and take vote. And that passes unanimously, so thank you. And we look forward to this project. So let's mark this day as something historic in our community. Thank you.
Resolution of the city council, the city of Newark authorizing a loan of $12 million to Newark Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund to satellite affordable housing associates for development of the multifamily, affordable housing rental development at 6347-6375 Thornton Avenue.
Thank you for that. The other business tonight is F1, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contractual service agreement with Government Technology Group LLC for development of a citywide broadband master plan and amend the 2022-2024 biennial budget and capital improvement plan.
Honorable members of the council, as your honor so indicated, this item is a recommendation from city staff to sign an agreement with a consultant. This is a part of the city's ARPA plan. If the council may recall, the council designated the sum of $200,000, dollars out of our ARPA fund towards broadband, broadband master plan. That's in addition to the $1 million the council set aside for implementation of that plan. And if the council may recall, we received $1.8 million from the state of California, largely due to our assembly member Alex Lee's legislative efforts. So we have nearly $3 million to spend on, on this project. Tonight, we have a presentation from our Information Technology Director, Mr. Ed Miranda. He's going to walk us through what this plan entails, explain briefly what the contract entails. We do have participants tonight from the consultant firm. One is here in person and one is appearing online. And with that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to our Information Technology Director, Mr. Ed Miranda. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, city manager. Okay. Thank you, city manager, Benun, and good evening, honorable mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I am Ed Miranda, IT Director for the city, and it is my pleasure to present an overview of the broadband master plan award and ask for approval via resolution to execute a contractual service agreement with Government Technology Group. Following the presentation, representatives from the Government Technology Group will be available to answer any questions you may have that I can't answer. With us in chambers tonight is Mr. Preston Young. He's the Senior Broadband Consultant. And on Zoom is Mr. Jeff Lewis. He is the Principal Consultant for Overall Project Management for Fiber Optic Planning. On the screen tonight, we will discuss the broadband master plan background and funding, followed by the qualifications of the Government Technology Group. followed by the qualifications of the Government Technology Group, and provide an overview of the process and the key elements, and also areas of focus to achieve the goals of creating a broadband master plan, and finally summarize these deliverables and recommendations. So what is a broadband master plan, you might ask? Well, the deliverable to the city will be a strategic plan to outline how the city aims to improve and expand its broadband internet infrastructure. In simple terms, it's a roadmap that lays out how Newark plans to make high-speed internet more available and affordable for everyone with a focus on unserved and underserved areas. This will involve identifying areas that need better internet access, develop strategies to provide that access, and determine the resources needed to implement those strategies. Basically, it's a plan to help guide decision-making and help ensure that everyone has access to fast and reliable internet with the funds that are available. Should you ever want to check on the status of this project or any American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA-funded projects, the city regularly posts updates on the city internet website. For this project in particular, a request for proposals was issued for a two-month period, and this evening, we are presenting the recommended proposal from the Government Technology Group. So the first phase of this project is to develop the broadband master plan. And funded by ARPA funds, this plan will help guide the decision-making and help prioritize where funds can make an impact. For the next phase of the project, we're fortunate to have funding in the form of, one, additional ARPA funds in the amount of $1 million. And two, the city is receiving $1.8 million from the state of California through Assembly Bill 179, largely due to the legislative efforts of Assembly Member Alex Lee. We all remember the big publisher's clearinghouse check. Well, so while the $2.8 million will be prioritized in the plan to address areas such as the community, economic development, education, healthcare, public safety, and city operations, the city will continue to seek additional funds as they become available. So to put this into perspective, our neighboring city, not to be named, their projected second phase requires $26 million for infrastructure improvements. So our $2.8 million is a start, but it will not be enough to fund everything that we want. So this will be a decision-making guide. About Government Technology Group, so the Government Technology Group is a qualified consultant as a technology consulting firm comprised of public service information technology leaders with extensive experience in local government with practical hands-on, real-life expertise delivering fiber optic, broadband, and smart city technologies. And identified for this project are listed there, Clancy Priest, Jeff Lewis, Preston Young, Mark Gunther. And they have partnered with Young Fiber. Some other cities that Government Technology Group has developed broadband plans are the cities of Modesto, Merced, Concord, and San Leandro. And those are just some examples. So the process, all right. So the broadband master plan will start with a needs assessment, and this will include an assessment of smart city elements, a look at public-private partnerships, and development of a digital inclusion plan. So in the needs assessment, there will be outreach to community and stakeholders along with market research to look at things such as residential consumers, economically disadvantaged populations, large employers, small employers, medium-sized business, multi-tenant property owners, healthcare providers, you name it, schools, local government and nonprofits, business, residents, property owners and developers with interests in distinct geographic areas such as downtown, community gathering areas, industrial zone properties, major highways, public transportation areas, library, eating, shopping, and entertainment areas. It will be quite extensive. For the inventory of assets and policies, there will be a review of existing policies and practices and also an assessment of the assets that the city can leverage. For the gap in feasibility analysis, this data will be captured during the discovery phase to document and compare the current infrastructure that we have with infrastructure needed to meet the needs and goals of the city. So there will be a keen eye on other broadband initiatives along with available grant funding and public-private partnerships. And these are also in scope for the development of this broadband master plan. So community member needs, how are we going to address those? So keeping in mind the diversity of the city of Newark, such as language, socioeconomic status, age and education level, addressing these community member needs will be very important. So we will have these meetings with identified stakeholders and coupled with a community survey. Those are in the plans. Balancing these needs of all citizens to provide broadband access across the various sectors is shown is quite important. I'll touch upon some of these. Energy and utilities, this will include power generation optimization and grid protection and control. Transportation can benefit by taking a look at urban mobility solutions and fleet optimization. Education, really important. This could include analytics and research, school solutions such as video conferencing for learning. Healthcare concerns surrounding remote monitoring of health and also telemedicine could play a factor. Smart buildings like energy and utilities, they look at energy optimization and smart metering. Public safety, this would address law enforcement, emergency management, and security and surveillance. E-government, address the records, complaint management, and even payment gateways. The Green City examines the way of creating green infrastructure related to smart cities, smart energy, and utilities. Throughout the process of interviewing and surveying, addressing smart city use of the Internet of Things, or things called IOT, those will be examined as they relate to public services and community member needs. If there are opportunities to modernize the use of broadband and smart cities, they will be examined. But more important, cybersecurity to keep the city protected from potential threats will always be top of mind. You can be a smart city, but you need to protect the city. Shown here are some of the smart city elements. I won't go through all of them, but I'll give you some examples. Some of them pictured here include smart transportation, energy efficiency, smart waste management, smart public services, a digital infrastructure, which is mostly this broadband infrastructure, open data, and citizen engagement. So early in the presentation, I talked about the process including a needs assessment. So depicted here are several assets that we can leverage and that we would need to gather to see what we have here in Newark. And as we inventory these assets and develop this inventory, we'll also investigate other successful operating groups and/or other joint power authorities that we can leverage. Here's an example. We could use the existing fiber optics or dark fiber by neighboring agencies such as the Silicon Valley Transit Authority, BART, or even the neighboring city of Fremont. Outreach to the community and stakeholders would include looking at local and regional partners such as these that are shown. It's important to forge these partnerships. To address the needs of the citizens, we would need to partner, engage with these entities that are within our city. Economic development. With regard to economic development at the city of Newark, this broadband master plan will need to address providing access to all areas of Newark, including those underserved areas where people have difficulty either affording or even accessing broadband. And this will help shape the economic development in Newark. Shown here is a sample project schedule. So how long will it take to develop this broadband master plan? This is a high-level project plan overview, and what we've been told from the consultant is it'll be about a 30-week effort. To put that into perspective, if we start next month, we should have a product by the end of this year, at which time, we will return to present the plan at a future city council meeting for adoption. So this evening, staff recommendation is to authorize the city manager via a resolution to execute a contractual services agreement with Government Technology Group, not to exceed the allocated $200,000 by the ARPA fund. So thank you for your attention and your time. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. And as a reminder, the consultants from Government Technology Group are present. Should you have any questions about the proposed broadband master plan?
Great. Colleagues, questions, comments? Okay. Are there, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Yes.
Hello, my name is Morgan Peterson. I live in the Lake District of Newark, and I am so excited to hear about this project. I know that my family has been looking into getting fiber optic for a long time, and there is a box on the opposite side of our street, and it would cost a lot of money to get all the way to our side. So this is fantastic to hear. I also am a former teacher, and I know it's a running joke in our schools how much the internet goes down, especially with us having close to one-to-one for the students, which is something that our neighboring city does not have. And so we have that great internet need. So I thank you for this project.
Excellent. Thank you for your time. Any other questions from folks in the audience? Ms. Harrington, is there anyone online that would like to speak to this item?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll return it back to my colleagues. Questions, comments? Councilmember Bucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Peterson, for your comments. You know, I think a lot of this came to light during the pandemic, and it really kind of shined a light on how many, especially students, didn't have access to good, fast internet. And we saw a lot of them, you know, like we saw on the news. We saw them in stores around Newark utilizing the free Wi-Fi, which was kind of the catalyst for this to happen. So I am really excited about this. I'm so excited, I still have that $1.8 million giant check from Alex Lee hanging in my office at home. So, no, this is great. It looks like a very comprehensive master plan. So I'm excited to get this going. So, yeah, eight months, that's great.
Other questions, comments? Matthew, Councilmember Jorgens.
So the $200,000, that covers the 30-week planning process. And then the other $2.8 million that we're looking at in implementation, has that been dispersed? Are we still waiting on it?
Yes, so, thank you for the question. The 200, up to $200,000 will be used for the planning, which will guide the use of the $2.8 million. So the recommendations that come out of the plan will let us know what's the best use of that? Is it better to use it for Wi-Fi hotspots? Should we have fiber? And again, these are just ideas. That will come from our consultant. So nothing has been allocated at all. But because there are ARPA funds, as we know, there is a time limit to expend these funds. And that is, you know, listed in the documentation. So once we get that plan, we will bring it to you, and then we will give you recommendations of where we think it would be best used.
Thank you. Because this, in all honesty, may be a long-term capital project. The project that comes to us at the end of the year may highlight the priorities on where maybe that first $2.8 million should be spent and an estimated cost and what the other improvements may be and what those costs may be moving forward. So I look at this as kind of a down payment on assessing where our immediate needs are as we work to getting kind of what that total cost will be for this entire project. You would agree with that?
Absolutely, and thank you. I hope this is your, I know the last project was your number one. This should be your second most exciting project.
Well, broadband's been a priority of this council. As Councilmember Bucci has mentioned, we've talked about this on a number of occasions, and it is a priority. The one question I do have, Mr. Miranda, and you mentioned this, the affordable for everyone. Can you describe briefly what that looks like? Because I'm really most interested in what the cost might be to the resident living in Newark who's paying probably an exorbitant amount for internet access. Can you describe what you would think or hope that cost might be to that resident down the road once we implement part of this program?
So it's difficult to assess that now. So a lot of this will rely on the government or the research that Government Technology Group will provide to us. But offering them more options for access rather than just the main provider that is prevalent within Newark now will lower those costs because that will create some competition. But that will not preclude us from the city potentially providing access. We've seen some articles with other cities providing access, free internet access to their cities. So those types of things will also be taken a look at. As far as home affordability, I know other cities have offered, or the schools in particular, they've given the hotspots to the kids so that they can access. Well, right now, you really have two major providers in Newark that you go home, it's like, well, is it going to be this one or this one? And it is quite expensive. If you go to other cities, they have other options, which are less expensive, more in the $25, $35 a month range for internet access rather than your $50, $60, sometimes $150 a month range. And again, these are just nothing concrete, but as more services become available, we can offer them. You see all the commercials, you know, from all of these private companies. So that's why it's important for Government Technology Group, and they did come up with this. They said, "An assessment of public-private partnerships is warranted to see what else we can do to partner with other proven carriers."
Excellent. And I think there's some real opportunities out there to tap into other partners that might want to join us in this venture, whether it be the school district, whether it be businesses, whether it be large residential properties. There may be opportunities for us to tap into some additional folks that might want to help contribute to that cause because at the end of the day, it'll benefit their clientele as well. So thank you for that presentation. If there's no other comments, I'll look for a motion to adopt the resolution as presented by staff.
So moved?
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Seconded by Councilmember Freitas. Please vote. And that passes, you and I. Thank you for the, Mr. Miranda.
Welcome.
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Newark authorizing the city manager to execute a contractual services agreement with Government Technology Group LLC to provide a broadband master plan and amend the 2022-2023 biennial budget and capital improvement plan.
Thank you. We now come to city council matters. I'll look to my colleagues for thoughts, comments they have, and I'll start with Councilmember Jorgens. Nothing for me tonight. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Freitas. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Bucci.
Feel like I talked a lot tonight. This was a great meeting. The mayor at one point said, hey, this is a very important date in our city's history. And I looked down and realized it was 3/23/23, which is a palindrome. So I wrote down a few of my favorite palindrones while I was sitting here. And obviously, you know, race car and taco cat, all great palindrones. But my all-time favorite, a man, a plan, a canal, Panama. So there you go. Have a little fun up here. I did want to remind everybody, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, April 1st, the League of Volunteers Love Newark will be hosting their big casino night. So get your tickets. It's going to be one of their big fundraisers this year. And, you know, a lot of that money goes back into the community here and helps fund a ton of services that help our community. And I will be on the microphone. If you didn't hear enough of me talking tonight, I will be talking that night as well. So, but it'll be a good time. Should be a couple hundred people there, lots of great prizes. And it'll be at Swiss Park in Newark. So April 1st, hope to see you there.
Vice Mayor McCollazo.
Thank you for not forgetting me.
Thank you for not forgetting me. So, first of all, I'm very happy I didn't have to recuse myself for anything this meeting. Thank you very much. Second of all, Women's History Month. So, I just want to acknowledge all the women that work here in the city for the tremendously wonderful job that they do. It's a pleasure working with you all. And you know, I want to help the Oakland mayor. She came out on TV and said, any pothole that gets reported, she would make sure it gets fixed. I called our city manager, I said, report our potholes. She said she would fix them. He did not. I don't know what I have to do. This Saturday, not next Saturday, this Saturday, Music for Minors is having a concert at Logan High School, and it's their major fundraiser. And it's the children, music by the children for the children, it's the arts that we don't have in all the schools anymore. So, anybody that would like to buy tickets, tickets are available. Anybody that would like to sponsor or just give a donation, please consider it. It's our future. We want to keep arts in our lives, so. And, happy Easter to everybody. Have a safe. We have a Family Day at the Park on the 1st. I will not be able to attend, I'm going to be working, but Family Day at the Park starts at 10 o'clock, from 10, I believe, till 12:30. And, thank you. Shop Newark.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Couple comments. The Alameda County Superior Court is seeking nominations of civic-minded county residents to serve on the Alameda County Civil Grand Jury. The jury examines and reports on the operations of local government agencies and to investigate citizen complaints, acting as the public's watchdog. Anyone interested in applying should go to the www.alameda.courts.gov for more information. Applications are due by May 5th. Also want to recognize that we are celebrating the holy month of Ramadan, which began on March 22nd and will end on April 21st. It's really a time of reflection, contemplation, and collaboration. This is the holiest month for our Muslim community, considered a period of fasting, considered one of the five pillars of Islam. So let's join in our residents in our community that are Muslim faith and share with them this holy day, this holy month. Also, as the Vice Mayor has indicated, this is the month for recognizing the outstanding women that we have in our city and in our organization, and I echo her comments. Thank you. Those are our council comments. The next item is closed session. It's my understanding that closed session is no longer necessary. Is that correct, Mr. Benoon?
That's correct, your honor.
And, Mr. Benoon, are there any comments that you'd like to end with before we close the meeting?
Sure, thank you, your honor. Two brief things. One, maintenance staff was out last Tuesday. As the council is aware, we experienced considerably high wind gusts that day. They were out for several hours responding to a whole assortment of calls, received calls for service for approximately 36 different locations, and they were out and they performed extraordinary. In about three weeks, when we come back for the next council meeting, we'll have a commendation prepared for not only the work they performed this past week, but every, all the work they performed in connection with the storms throughout this winter season. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them and thank them. And then secondly, as Madam Vice Mayor so pointed out, Saturday, April 1st is Family Day at the Park. It's from 10:00 AM to 12:30, rain or shine. It's at Newark Community Center Park, and we'll have the traditional events at that Family Day at the Park. So that would include a photo booth, arts and crafts, games, egg dyeing. We do have some volunteer work from the service clubs hosting the egg dyeing and the egg hunt. We have an amazing group of talented recreation staff, and they're very enthusiastic about this event, looking forward, very much looking forward to it. So, again, that's Saturday, April 1st, from 10:00 AM to 12:30. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Benoon. With that, folks, our meeting is closed.